This is the City of Harvey, Council meeting Monday, August 26th, 2024. It is 7:04 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. Has everyone been able to check in? We have a call. We have a call. Please do it one more time. Okay, we have a call. Our next item on the agenda is application of pledge of allegiance. We can run a little bit of a panel.
Goodbye, Mr. President. Riches for him, Father. Thank you for this day. Thank you, Lord Jesus, for the Holy Spirit, Lord Jesus, that will dwell within us. Lord Jesus, thank you for each and every individual that sounded the sound of my voice to attend this meeting. Thank you, Lord, for all good thanks that you've done for us. Thank you, Lord, for each and every idea and every resolution and every ordinance that we're gonna hold on tonight. Lord Jesus gives us the wisdom and the knowledge that you gave us out. So we can pray in your will, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Good evening, beautiful people. This is the United States of America and the Republic of which it stands. All nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is ordinary comment. Unless there's any objection, we will limit comments to three minutes. And we will start with me. First of all. Do you? Please speak into your microphone so that I can hear you.
Okay, can I have a little bit of you? Okay, thank you. I just have a couple notes here. I want to thank everyone who came out to our board meeting. Ms. Sandra Oliver, her husband, who did a wonderful job of recording the championship. She is a county assessor of the local championship. She brought up some interesting points. Please make sure that you have your opportunity to ensure that we get all your deductions in line for next year. If you have any questions, you're more than welcome to go to her office located in Cook County. On 333 South 150 Max Street, but they say it's 160 South Street. Also, I just want to make it clear to people. I saw on the news today, and maybe many of you as well, saw about the West Nile. A lot of people are getting sick with that. So it may be in our best interest to walk through our neighborhood and that area. To see if we have any containers that can retain water for the mosquitoes. Because it's gonna be, um, it's gonna be quite serious for the next couple of weeks. And then the same thing with your ticks. Ticks are really big, um, in our area this year. If you do want to hit your, um, your yard spray, or if you live near the canal, you can contact the mosquito banquet. They're located right in Harvey. And I believe that ends my report. I just wanted to wish everyone, um, a good evening and stay hydrated. Please check on your neighbors tomorrow. If you are fortunate, they have air conditioning. You may want to welcome somebody in, um, just a bit for a few hours of routine. If anyone needs, um, a place to go when you live in the first ward, please contact me. Thank you. Night could be reached at 708-596-7470. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next is the second of the board.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for being in attendance tonight, um, using your platform, uh, to be involved and specifically engaged. I want to thank the mayor's office and the Harvey Police Department for attending our after-school class on Saturday, August 14th. It was extremely well attended. We had about 300 young people. So wishing all of our young people from District 152 in 205 a very prosperous and blessed school year. Our next public safety meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 18th, with myself and one of our older persons, cheerleading, Tracy Key. Wednesday, September 18th, at 6:30 PM. We have next food services present. They're working hand in hand with Cook County. And so we're going to have some support on how you can make your home lead-free, which is extremely important. Just to just put something on your cereal boxes after, remember this evening. Melation 69 says, "Let us not become weary in doing good." For the proper time people, we may harm us if we do not give up. My servitude agitates their court in this administration. Misogyny, bullying, and intimidation are unacceptable behaviors that create a toxic environment and undermine the effectiveness of any organization, including the City of Harvey, council, and administration. See, the media has the ability for us to be emergent in our decision-making, but the truth shall prevail. City of Harvey, I can think of a variety of ways that the public safety efforts used towards me could have been used to decrease the erroneous issues plaguing our city. Did you know of crime occurrence every nine hours and eight minutes here in the City of Harvey? It's essential to promote a community of respect, inclusivity, and empathy, where everyone feels valued, heard, and safe, for using their transparent voice. The city council and administration should foster an environment that encourages open communication, while constructing a free, that respectful disagreement. City of Harvey, second ward, I'm going to continue to let my freedom build. I had the opportunity to see several meetings evenings, and one thing that was particular, um, being at a millennial roundtable was, it's our time. It's our time to stand up and be radical about making change, effective, swift, long-term improvement, as Congressman John Lewis once stated. I assure you that I'm still a phone call away. I'm still a door knocked away. We're still located at 15446 South Lex 10. And as I mentioned, allowing the freedom bills to ring, I'm reclaiming my time. You all elected me to be in this meeting, the second ward, the City of Harvey, and I intend to do my job as an effective legislator every chance that I get. Thank you.
Next is the fourth ward.
As a resident, I still can go to the board, but as a staff. Make sure I got this. Everybody can hear me. I just want, first of all, that can everyone that came here tonight. I ask you to be encouraged in these times of possible confusion or disappointment. I took a note to serve my residents with taken any concern. So if I have not done it, they'll spark. Let me know and give it a chance to make it better. Mayor, your job in these council meetings is to keep order. But as a mayor, things have been out of order. I feel that you have not given me the proper respect that I am worthy of, and I am not going to ask or beg for it. But I will ask and beg my residents because I'm serving. And not to anyone in this council. I have strongly voted for possibly 65% of resolutions you have brought to the table. So you or anyone else cannot say I'm totally against you. When you served as alderman, you voted no on everything. But now that you're mayor, you want 100% support or else. I am not going to bash you or anyone on this city council. We all have our own unique talents as elected officials. And I am, and anyone on this council. We all have our own unique talents as elected officials. And I have no right to judge anyone that the majority of the people voted for. But I will stand on my ground and debate, not argue, when it comes to the beliefs. My goal is to be the best alderman person in this city that's ever had. But I've come to realization that that can never happen as long as an alderperson cop a chapter into the law. I'm so proud of her. Let me count the ways. Without giving into detail, Harvey was recently been in the news along with social media on a alleged altercation between two people whose name I need not mention. I feel that this incident should be handled, should have been handled internally and not outwardly. That's our personal authority to choose for it. I wish we could put everything behind us in the past and start off fresh, but it seems like we're heading in aggressions or getting prepared to the village of God. I ask that we come together to prevent that happen. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So. Go back to unusual. It will be continued. City of Harvey's council meeting is a meeting designed to handle city business. During the period of approximately two weeks, several members of the allies and municipal officials come together and provide beautiful, unrelenting city leadership by the angels certain actions. In the City of Harvey, council members are provided the agenda one week in advance of the meeting, unless it's a special meeting. During the week, council members are provided the opportunity to raise questions or concerns regarding agenda items. The council members are to raise such questions with the mayor. If during the week, questions or concerns are not raised or raised and answered, then the council members are not allowed to raise the question on the meeting floor. It is the duty of the council member to read and understand the council package before the meeting. Once again, the council member has it prior to the meeting to raise questions. It is not proper for a council member to wait until the meeting to raise the question. Additionally, questions raised during the meeting when they could have been raised during the meeting are not fair to the chair. A member of the body be forced to provide an answer to a question when such a question could have been raised, properly considered, and answered during the meeting prior to the meeting. The meeting chair expedites the meeting and decides all questions of order. In addition to many other responsibilities, the chair preserves civility and decorum. As such, there should be no booing, kissing, clapping, cheering, shouting, or other forms that represent this type of conduct. This type of conduct is considered disruptive to the meeting. Public comment is a very important part of the meeting. However, it must be conducted in a certain manner. Shouting is prohibited. Personal attacks, which may cause disruption, are also prohibited. In general, the chair may correct any conduct which is disruptive to the meeting. The chair makes a final decision whether conduct is disruptive. This is not impatience. There may be other ways to challenge the chair's decision. Argument of the chair is not known in those ways. Some commentators may choose to offer unsanctated or ungrateful claims or opinions. As part of the meeting, city council members do not respond in private comment. This does not mean the commentator's claims or opinions are true. The only thing that it means is that this particular meeting is not comprehensive to address the commentator's claims or opinions. At times, one may feel as if they are not being heard. The real issue may be that the person is attempting to be heard in the wrong way. In this penalty, it should strive for expediency, civility, and decorum. At all times, all participants can assist the meeting by not engaging in disruptive conduct. I read that and I'm going to ask. Please refrain from clapping, booing, kissing, cheering, cheering, or any other disrespectful behavior to run this city council meeting. I thank you.
One order.
Chair, there is no point, there is no point of order. There is nothing that has been changed as far as parliamentary procedure. There is no point of order.
Well, I don't, I don't think I need a point of order if you make a statement and I follow by rules. You go by, you said specifically, we should let the council know in advance, right? I emailed you.
Sir.
And you never respond.
Sir.
You did not explain.
Sir, first of all, no, first of all, you did not ask the question that was pertaining to this agenda. That's why it's not addressed this.
No, I asked the question on the statement that you made. The statement that you made was that we need to inform the city hall and administrators, can you think about anything that happened or what went on prior to the meeting?
You're not having order because you are talking about something that has nothing to pertain to this discussion. I would appreciate it. I would appreciate it if you could come to order. Please.
Okay, I know.
Please. No, you are the lady of the meeting. You are, you are out of order, sir. Please come to order. Once again, you are out of order, sir. Please. Please. Come to order. Would you please? I have explained that what you are discussing has nothing to do with relevance of this agenda that we have before us today.
Did you listen to my question?
I heard what you said, and you would like to discuss it some other time than what you requested. I am more, I'm more than that. Sir, sir, once again, this is you are, you are out of order. That's the last time that I'm going to say that. Other than that, I'm asking to remove yourself from the council chair.
Ask me, I'm not, no, I'm not.
Okay, sir, say it anyway. Chair, ready to fight? Okay, we'll take the 15 minutes. Thank you very much.
Right. Absolute craziness, as you can see, disorder. Now, motion was made. No motion was voted on by the city, or no motion was voted on by the council. So I don't know exactly how that works.
Ladies and gentlemen, police step outside. Boy, we want some recess and everybody's gonna be asked to step outside the council chair. They will need to come back. The police step outside. You have to go back and tell them what you want to do, just so you have. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand up. Please, every council chair.
Oh, what happened to my stuff? Oh, did somebody take it? Oh, she took it for me. Oh, oh.
Yeah, y'all, y'all gotta make it make sense why my baby can't ride her bike down the street. Scrappy, going out the sidewalk. Make it make sense to me. From this 24th, unless I was starting to rattle all these damn things, all of them get rattled. I'm not leaving out this building. Did, did I not just?
I'm not sure if I have it blocked off or not. Yeah, I think, I think that door's locked, so.
All the decent cars look crazy because of the stupid. Made me drive my 2024 down that ragged ass goddamn street. What the hell, Ron? I, I'm driving down 153rd, don't know it. My goddamn 2024.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it.
So he gonna ask for 15 minutes, and he ain't even been here.
Yeah, I don't understand. I don't understand.
Like you haven't been present for several meetings now. So how you gonna ask for 15 minutes?
Right. I don't understand.
Ain't nobody gonna say nothing.
Bridge Park, 118,000 south of Saturday. The president's litter and shit. You gotta load this shit up in his head. And this man, like, that's my only chance to come and talk about it, and then he live and need it three minutes. Like, I didn't pay to sit here. $2,100. That's, that's why I'm here. Because he, he made me pay $21,000 property tax to live next to the man that's on his grass whole time here. Okay, next, next to the man though. Next to where Brad's growing up out the damn sidewalk. No, no fuck.
You're right.
That, and let's talk about it.
We gotta come outside. Go back in. Be frisky again.
That's my dog. That's my dog.
It makes sense to say, how are you?
I know. That's a Harvey house. It's nice.
I wanna see the nice house.
We standing outside because he was, he wants to be a private. And he mad because he can't be loud. Tracy acts, I would say, and it's just, it's just.
Where are the other older people at? You know what I'm saying? We gotta bring the block here. Ain't no way anywhere. We gotta come out here for 15 minutes. And we can just sit there and wait. That's it. We wanna fix up. You ain't saw, you ain't saw nothing.
I told you.
I think he's, I think he's just doing that because he's afraid to send everybody out again like he did last time when he ended it early. He knows he can't do that again. So now he's stuck.
I don't have to see them. I don't have to see them.
You're seeing the fucking. Oh, we wanna see the subdivision. It's falling apart. Oh, no, 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 it's falling apart.
I wanna see the nice house.
Come to Harvey.
You feel okay?
Yeah, you guys.
You stay in the trailer. Are you over the trailer? You stay in the trailer. That trailer is too damn small. She wants you to show her.
It's a weekend place.
I can show you my house here.
This is my boat. I got a boat.
Really? After what happened last time, I'm not turning my camera off. Because I really, I, I've learned that. But yeah, you know, I'm behind you guys. Keep speaking up.
This needs to be, like, really, really popular stuff.
Right.
Indianapolis. I got a house. Oh, my sister does. I got friends in Indianapolis.
I'm on the golf cart.
We have a golf cart.
Yeah, this is wrong. There's no excuse for putting people outside for a recess. First of all, heat and gas is 97 degrees. This is your brother said this, your empty.
Where is my ass?
No, did you hear?
Where am I at right now?
Bad mistake. Bad mistake. You could have went in that office and said with him.
I could have.
Had your Pepsi.
And I could have. Oh, I got my Pepsi.
She could have went in there and had your Pepsi. She knows the right people. I'm with the people. That's what it is?
Well, you guys, that's where you, surely you guys gotta speak out. You, you can't be, keep voting with the mayor.
If I believe in, in what it's voting for, I'm gonna vote with the.
So you're okay on record? You're saying you're okay with us being expelled into the heat?
No, you shouldn't.
I didn't vote. Did I vote on that?
You didn't speak up.
Did I vote on it?
No, you should have spoken up.
Don't mix my words.
You didn't speak up.
That's what you're very good at.
No, you didn't speak up.
No one voted on the recess.
Exactly. It was a motion. And surely, as the senior alderwoman could have said, Mr. Mayor, point of order. We are not this much. You should vote on it.
I have control at the meeting.
Surely, when you wanna take control, you are very good at taking control. You choose not to.
And do you know?
I'm just saying, I got that on record.
You can get whatever you want on record. You mix words on it one guy's.
Well, also, they just, um, people have been breaking into Ascension again, um, the past few weeks. We have more drug dealers, and we have people. So what are you doing about that?
You gotta call the war reclamation. They own the property.
No, the City of Harvey doesn't. Yeah.
Oh, they do it now?
You know what?
That's why I, I have a lot of Catholics waiting, hoping that Shirley will speak up. On this, a lot of former Ascension members.
Tell them Pauli Arcisces.
A house back there.
No, the Arcisces doesn't own it. It's the city.
You said, you said that the church does.
No, no, the City of Harvey bought it. So it's gotta come from the city.
That's not a trailer park.
That's a house in Harvey.
Oh. Was he her backyard? That's not a trailer.
I will find this trailer. You know what, Dad? We gotta get, we gotta get, uh.
Well, he never voted on the, he never voted on it. Never voted on it. I, I don't even understand why.
But, 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 wait, 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 wait. I can tell you why.
Oh, he has the right to this.
Yes, he does.
At recess?
Yes, he does.
With one most of the no vote?
Yes, he does, because he is the chair.
Okay.
That's me a new most.
This is Arizona. The house in Arizona. Show me a picture of that house. Show me a picture of that house in Arizona. That's all I wanna-
I need to see the board, Mr. Board, take a look. I need to see it.
I did ask Shirley for the record, I said, why didn't you speak out as the senior alderwoman? To say, we should not be sent out into the heat. She said, what am I doing?
I can clear that up for you right now, okay?
I did ask her for the record, she said, oh, I, I can't speak out, I said, Shirley, you know how to take leadership when you want to, you didn't say a word. So, so you wanted us to be out here, she said, no. She said, oh, no, I'm, I'm out here with the people, cause she doesn't have any power. That's what I asked her, I asked on record, she had excuses, I wanted on record, on video.
Can you give me the ordinance number, or the state law, number for that, that the chair can do and say what he wants? But it, but it is one, so if I look for it, and I don't find it, then what?
No, what you do, what you willing to, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm trying to find-
I also asked, um, Shirley on the record, what she's gonna do about Ascension, they're breaking into Ascension again, we have drug dealers, and all sorts of vagabonds going into the city-owned Ascension property.
All you gotta do is stand right there, and you see all the, all the, the heroin addicts walking up and down and doing the matrix and doing all this, all over 151st Street.
We need some leadership, and this is what we get.
I mean, don't nobody, don't nobody move, they act like they're Santa Claus or something. And when they speak out, the two of them that speak out, it's all waste, you know, clear the room, this and that and all that, man, this is-
You do live in the mood.
Yep.
I don't live in it, I own a mobile.
And then watch now, we wait till, uh, election time. Then it'll be, what can we do for you? They will, will, will remember that you couldn't even listen when we had complaints.
Yep, vote no. Vote no, and if you can, vote hell no, that's all I'm gonna say. That's why- No, because he didn't wanna hear nobody talking, that's what it was, cause he knew people was gonna start talking.
The other older persons have to stay inside, you're not on the outs, are you? You're not on the outs.
Hey, Shirley could speak up, Shirley, you're, you're very influential, if you spoke up, I think then Clark would listen to you.
Are we going back in?
Yep. Hey, hey.
Hi, good, how are you?
Hey there, you came with mom tonight, good for you. Backing mom up? I love it. I said, backing you up, I love it. He's showing his civic engagement. So he, Mr. Dictator had his 15 minutes, I guess. Well, at least the AC is working today. It could, I guess it could always be worse. Now we gotta do all this again, huh? We gotta do all this again.
Are you still recording?
Oh, yeah, but I was holding it over your head.
Oh, oh, okay.
I just learned after the last city council meeting, I usually don't record everything, but after the last one, I was like, I could record everything. Cause you just never know. I think he did that because he's afraid that if he clears the whole meeting and ends it again, I think it's too bad for him. Like, I don't think he's willing to go to trial, but you never know.
I gotta get the left one done. At the same time, I mean, when twenty, uh, twenty, where did you get it done? Okay, I went to Russia for this one, it's back in the tire. So I'm thinking about Christ, I like Christ.
Everyone will look, and then can look. And Michael stands present. Once again, have a horn, and we will continue. We want forward automatic comment. Chair rises the third ward.
Good evening, everyone. Madam clerk, for the record. I'm requesting that my seat is permanently changed away from Alderman Colly Chapman, for logistic reasons. The false accusations she stated to Fifth and Fifth Ward, Alderman, that I made a threat to her in the past. I never made any threat to her or anyone else, as I don't make idle threats. During this term, I have tolerated unprofessional sidebar comments from Alderman Chapman, as well as these staged comments given about my vote, and stance of the businesses not paying their share. Given what I witnessed on August 14th, I feel compelled now to put this in the record. I witnessed the hostile behavior exhibited to a city employee from Alderman Chapman, to the point of making threats to physically harm. I no longer feel secure during these city council meetings. Meeting after meetings, there is always some form of intimidation tactics from her and/or her followers. I don't think any elected official should have to experience this type of behavior on a bi-monthly basis. Mr. Mayor, this isn't a reflection on how you conduct the meeting, and this is a reflection of Alderman Chapman, her followers, and myself. For the record, already being falsely accused of a transgression, I need to protect my interests and my being against my report.
Thank you. Next is the Fifth Ward.
Good evening, everyone. I wanna thank everybody for being here. As always, I encourage, uh, our residents and business owners, all our stakeholders to attend our meetings, um, to ask questions, to reach out to you all the person, uh, whenever you do have questions. Cause I, that's, that's the most important part, uh, of what we're trying to accomplish here. I look forward to seeing everyone, uh, not only, you know, kids are back in school, so just be careful if you're, uh, driving and such like that. Uh, make sure that you, uh, look out for our kids. Uh, also, I know, just gonna kind of hit on this already. Um, let's check on our seniors, I'll be making calls and stops, um, tomorrow, it's gonna be hot. And we talked about the mosquitoes, listen, make sure you all are checking your gutters too. A lot of folks don't realize that, that, you know, if you ain't clean them gutters out, then you got standing water. The mosquitoes will breed in your guts, that, just make sure you, uh, check those gutters, let's try to get them out. Um, let me see, I just don't feel like not talking, because I got time, even though I don't know if I really got anything else to say. Other than, I love y'all, I don't, I don't like all this, you know, let's stop all this. You know, we, we can get things done in a professional, orderly way, um, some way to do everything, let's do it. The public, I love y'all. We don't have to agree on everything, but we can do so in a respectable manner. That's it, say what you have to say, you know, do what you wanna do, but let's just respect each other. One thing I always have, just, just, just respect each other. We're about to try to do a job, sometimes we get it wrong, sometimes we get it right. But the thing is, don't sit up there and, and, and criticize every time you get it wrong. I know, saying I'm only you, but I never hear nobody get up there and say nothing, you can tell me. I always, we always get it wrong. Well, the thing that everybody don't feel that way. But thank you, once again, for being here, and I look forward to your, your public, uh, comments and everything together. Now, here, he was on one time. Next is the Sixth Ward.
Thank you very much, and, uh, good evening, everybody, for coming out. First of all, I'd like, uh, have four or five points that I'd like to, uh, acknowledge. Uh, first one, I'd like to thank the residents of the Great Six Ward, cause, uh, we had a ward being last Saturday over at McCastle Park. And the meeting was well attended, it was a major success. I was also donating an abundance of fresh food and vegetables for everyone. Everyone was able to take peaches, plums, apples, carrots, carrots, and other things home. Uh, I don't think nobody went without, and, uh, we had boxes and boxes of pears and plums, and they were really sweet, weren't you, Joe? Alright, there's been a, there's been a community ice door on the corner of 146th and Hollywood, the old car wash. And mainly for many years, uh, this week, that ugly building has been boarded up and secured by the city of Harvey and his administration with large concrete blocks. And, uh, this building has been a plague to our community with prostitution and drug dealing for many years. It gives me great pleasure that this problem of, for the residents of the Sixth Ward has been gone, it's been eliminated. I'd like to give special thanks to the Harvey Street Department for its dedication and cunning and cleaning in the sixth, in the Great Six. Um, the ward looks good, and I've had an opportunity to talk to a lot of residents, and they're very happy with the overall appearance of what's going on. Uh, Rick Seppley, Mr. Rocker, you guys should be commended on your diligent efforts on taking care of the city's business. The Fire Department, Chief Fisher, there were two significant fires in the Sixth Ward all within the past week. Uh, one was at Green Street, 14504 Green. I was getting ready for church Sunday morning when I had the call. By the time I got my toes on it, that over there, the fire trucks were pulling away because the fire had been diminished. One thing for certain, and I find it, this would be extremely imperative, that if you call for the police department, or you call for a fire department, you wanted to get there, and you wanted to get there quick, cause we just don't pick up and dial 911 haphazardly. And I'd like to commend the Fire Department, and, uh, one more fire at 347 Silvy Boulevard, right before you get to the fire. The grass caught fire, and the Fire Department was there, and that fire was diminished within seconds. And this is something that we should not take for granted, and we should commend our police department. All of our first responders, well, I was there on the scene, and I had an opportunity to do so, and let me pray one second.
Point of order.
Chair recognizes the fourth ward.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, I would just like to offer a suggestion to the council. If people are not comfortable to the person that they're sitting next with, if-
Sir, this is not the room for that council. This is, this, this, sir, we don't swear, no swearing, no swearing. This is not, this is not the space for that, this is not the space for that.
Please, so our next, and if you can put it in the writing, please submit.
The next item on our agenda, the Chair recognizes the Second Ward.
Based on the previous example, you know, we stated, uh, you mentioned that we can discuss things that have to do with the agenda. So one of the things that Alderman Smith was just making mention regarding myself, the Second Ward Alderman, during automatic comment. And since this is within the limits, Corporate Council, could you confirm that?
Uh, what's your question?
That I am within my regard to be able to have a discussion based on the topic at hand, number four, automatic comment, where Alderman Smith had commented regarding me, I called for a point of order, and I just wanna make a certain, and I make a rebuttal, that I will be our ward.
There is no point of, there is no point of order.
Thank you for recognizing my point of order.
There is no, there is no point of order.
You didn't recognize-
There is no point of order.
Is it now that there's no point of order?
Rest in peace.
Definitely, we need Christ of all.
Yes, we do, and if we ever need him, we sure will need him now. So, please, uh, no, without all you do that, without, you are out of the order, you are out of the order, ma'am, you are out of the order. Ma'am, please come to order, see, we, we don't, we don't make sure we do this one right, okay? So, so the next one, the next one is, I'm gonna ask it to be removed from the, from the chamber, please respect the chair. There was none, none, none of the point of order. You are out of order. Will you please remove yourself from the, from the camera? Please remove yourself from the camera, you are not following the instructions of the chair. Please, uh, uh, Chief, would you please, uh, escort the second Alderman woman, woman, that going in? He can speak on afterwards, but she gotta go. Man, uh, ma'am, would you please remove yourself? Please remove yourself from the meeting, thank you very much.
I don't understand why I'm gonna be in the-
This, this, this mic isn't working, but please remove yourself. So now we're gonna go, we're gonna go again and again and again and again and again, we gotta remove yourself from the meeting. Thank you very much, and, uh, how many? Okay, would you please stop delaying the meeting, and, and let's get this, this on the road, let's go. And let's get this, this on the road, let's go. Madam, Chief, remove.
Ladies and gentlemen, please step up if you do want.
If there is, for the record, Ruby Donahue, Zara Gervin, Jonathan Johnson, Sharon McGee, Glenn James Watson, Ryan Sinewski, Chappelle Hooks, you still will have time for public comment, when public comment is available. But until that time, please remove yourselves as well. You understand, we said for another fifteen minutes, until we, um, until the floor has been cleared.
So stupid. You know, I, I know I need exercise, but, I know I need more exercise, but this is not the way that I was thinking. Like, I was thinking walk my dog, and stuff. Are they gonna come get us for public comment, then?
I guess they'll see.
They're gonna call our names, and we'll be outside.
Why send them to do stuff that's illegal?
Again.
This is ridiculous.
Right. The police must be tired of it, I'd be tired of all this.
Yeah, they tired of it, but they don't want to lose their job.
Right, right. Right, it's hot, mosquitoes, no, no respect for the people. No respect for the people at all.
This is what I've been trying to tell you about.
Okay, what happened?
You see what, you see what?
Oh, we can say?
Only public comment, if you have to do a couple of public comments, you stay.
Oh, okay.
You sign up for public comment, yeah, you sign up for public comment, only public comment.
Someone can... Can you, can you tell the other people, because they might not know outside, about the public comment? Like, I know, I know, at least, what's her name's gonna, Glynnis, I know she signed up too. Otherwise, they're not gonna know. Oh, wait, okay, Glynnis is here, okay. Yes.
We're not in public comment yet. Uh, Chief, we are not in public comment yet. I said they can come back when it comes time for public comment.
Alright, guys, step one out to the lobby.
Like, I know I need more exercise, but this is not how I was... This is not how I was planning on it. Be careful, take your time. I was thinking, like, walk the dog, not go in and out of the same hall. Right, right. Oh my god. Oh, hey Tracy, hey. Do they want us to go in? Uh, yeah, I'm supposed to make public comment, but they told us to leave. Do they want us to go back in again?
I'm not sure.
I know, I'm so confused. Oh, okay, okay. So, public comment, we can stay here? Oh, okay, I'm so confused, I don't know where to go. Oh, I was gonna say, I know Glynnis, okay, I know Glynnis was supposed to. She's trying to remember all the people, so that they don't, you know, they can still have their chance to share. Okay.
And not being able to hear about the budget, about the money they spending. Yay, 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 that's all they do, yay, yay, yay. Just spend up your money. Tax you through the roof. This is so silly.
They're also voting on a multi-million dollar settlement tonight.
Right, right. How much is the settlement?
Oh, are, is he...
Two on the agenda?
Two, yeah, I don't know how much the other ones were, but I know the one is extremely expensive.
Oh, is it? Just to vote, so, to all vote, so...
That's a police settlement from 2014? That was the first one.
I mean, if they don't have a form, they can't, they can't have a meeting.
How many are in there?
Nine of them. Tracy said he had a family emergency.
And who else is it?
Drawn, Alderman, Roy.
Oh, she was, she was just smoking or something?
So they gonna, they gonna get their way. It's, it's going there right now? Yeah, he gonna get his way.
But why was this last one for? It was because people cheered? What was the last one that he made everybody leave for? Because people cheered for Colby? Oh, okay. I was just, I lose track of all the... Like, wait, what was offending him now?
But I think because Alderman Chapman was asking the lawyer to, to, to chime in.
And then they cut his mic off.
And then his mic wasn't working, or they cut it off.
Yeah, they cut it off.
So he couldn't address it. And so she kept asking, right, what's the point of him responding?
After you just missed the roll, man.
Oh, yeah, okay.
They have a meeting without us?
That's what I don't understand.
I'm, yeah, isn't that illegal to have a public meeting without the public?
You've been on video, you've been on video. That is a violation, he's conducting a whole meeting without...
He's conducting a meeting without the public.
Right, I was asked to leave. I'll tell you that, I was asked to leave.
That's true, that's a good idea, to get it on.
The people doing public comment should be able to be in there.
Right, so we can know what they saying, I don't know what they saying.
But I don't even understand why anybody would be put out.
Can you hold some meeting without the, without the public?
Look at the empty seats. They're connect, they're conducting public business without the public.
Talking about this Quorum present?
This is bullied all through white school, I know he ain't pointing at me. I know, I'm still with him.
He needs the gun now. He needs the gun.
Clarence Kellow. That's the ultimate insult, he ain't no better than other things, Clarence Kellow.
I mean, he'll be a good guy, crack, if he wasn't in his ear.
What they voting on?
He don't want to do that.
He don't want to, right, that's what I'm saying.
Before signing to do it.
Right.
The, the officers, they force them to do it.
They sitting up voting on stuff. Right, but they don't know money about any tax.
There is no, there is no, there is no, uh, audience, no public. There's two older persons, which is Kobe Chapman, he...
Well, they not even following the agenda, they're voting on stuff because that's at the end of the agenda.
Family emergency.
I was wondering why he was doing all this, because aren't they, they're supposed to have executive session anyway?
He's running a meeting without the public. So, they're voting without going into executive session?
Right, now it's just all screwed up.
That's fine.
It's all just over, like a little cheering?
We about to make some phone calls.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
We gonna make some phone calls, we gonna make Raoul and all them do their business.
What we need to do is, is create a form letter, and everybody send it in.
Right, that's why I'm almost like, should I make my comment? I guess I could make it twice. Can make it another time.
Vote meeting, joke is in, because they bet they buddies and friends and all this. That's just crazy, man.
Well, if I were a Harvey police officer, I would definitely be looking for a job elsewhere. I would not want to be associated with, with Mr. Clark.
That's what they do.
Right.
They go and they find jobs elsewhere.
Who wants to be associated with this? To me, I'd be ashamed to show my resume, I'd be, I would just ignore that, that time I worked for Harvey, just forget about that, because it's so unprofessional. I would not want to be associated with it.
What we really need is a community solution to be honest to have.
Community solutions ain't gonna, because he gonna run. It ain't gonna do nothing.
You need to be able to express yourself.
I mean, expressing yourself and nothing being done, is just ridiculous.
Before the mayor, the mayor, you're saying, this Ruben? Yeah, we just have this a party outside, so everybody can get in and just say what they want, just say it. But saying what you have to say ain't gonna work. No, that's not, that doesn't serve us. Public comment is, they can respond. Oh, I see, so there could be a dialogue, oh, I see.
It ain't that they can't, they can respond, he just don't want, he just don't want.
Right, and then he always says, well, email or contact my officer, call. The problem is, he doesn't email back, he won't have personal appointments, so...
Remember what? What do we have?
Missing, missing ceiling tiles.
So, state law does not say that we can clap that we can't clap.
Oh, that's true, you know, I noticed that the other night, or the other meeting, when the lawyer...
Fire was saying it was still expired, they was three years expired.
I don't, I don't think I can see the tag.
It was, it was three years, they was three years expired.
Hmm, you're right. We should get that in camera too. Well, you, you, you thought he was gonna work on this house this week without a permit? Major work, too. But then if you try to do that, then he'll come, he'll come take your shirt off.
Well, obviously, you're not outside, so unless you want to go outside. I suggest you guys, please.
I'm not leaving.
Sorry, not dear, you guys are gonna take off. Well, I really hope that we can at least get this in the news, because that, that's crazy. A second time clearing the public out of a public meeting, like... Right. I mean, I could see if people were threatening violence, or like punching people, but for clapping and cheering?
Y'all see the...
Cheering? It's like, this is craziness.
Oh, yeah.
And everyone is so polite and so cur, it's not like people are swearing.
You ain't clapping for him?
I think he just, he was upset this time, he just preached, uh...
I mean, I don't know if anyone's been to Chicago City Council meeting, but they get crazy. And they still have the, the whole meeting. They have people banging on the window, they're swearing, they're doing... They still have their meeting? I mean, we're nothing like that. We're so, we're so peaceful and polite here. Oh, it's the treasurer's report thing. Motion to move treasurer's report to comptroller for review and approval. Let's zoom into that. So, do you see that? That's what they're voting on, it says, motion to move treasurer's report to comptroller for review and approval. Why does the comptroller have to review the elected treasurer's report? I don't understand.
Alright, guys, yes, come back.
Two of the important issues for the city of Harvey. To name old business, tend to new business. To be one, the motion to approve the settlement agreement between Henry Hill and the city of Harvey. This motion authorizes the settlement agreement between Henry Hill and the city of Harvey for the events that allegedly occurred between March 12, 2014, and March 8, 2017. The chair will entertain the motion to approve that, the motion by the first, and the second by the third. Is there any discussion? Here are your nine and treasures. If you catch the votes. Motion carries. Next item is a motion to approve, uh, release and settlement agreement between Kenya, Kason, and the city of Harvey. This motion authorizes the release and settlement agreement between Kenya, Kason, and the city of Harvey for pending lawsuit 2023, 6011123. I have a motion by the first, and second by the third, is there any debate? Here are your nine. Motion carries. Uh, first is, we get this, once again, to be all those followed by Ryan Sinewski.
Hello, it's counsel, and a few people that sent you. So, the problem that I have is that it's okay for our elected officials to be disrespected by anybody that you choose. Um, people that are not even elected officials, just because they are city workers, they shouldn't be able to disrespect our elected officials. I was there during the altercation, I can reenact it if you want me to, because I can't understand how she was, um, arrested, had a mugshot, which came out the next day. We can't even afford anything in getting up the back in five days. But it's... It's okay for other, older persons to disrespect other, older persons. And I just think that it's, it's crazy, and it's, um, it's unfair. And then you make all these rules. Where are the ordinance numbers? Where are the state phone, uh, numbers for these rules that you're making up? I mean, you do have, uh, something to follow as well. You want people to follow what you say, but you need to follow the law. You can't restrict our speech, um, as long as we're not threatening anybody, as long as we're not swearing. It should be nothing that should be restricted, besides those two. I haven't heard anyone, um, threaten any of your elected officials, except for seeing your city administrator, uh, push older woman Kobe Chapman on the 14th of August. And then you have older woman Smith, who made the gestures. No, nobody's saying nothing about that, though. Nobody's getting charged, pressed against them about that. But y'all pressing charges on Kobe? Because she pushed her because she didn't want to see her talking to the, um, council? I'm standing right there, I saw it. So, since y'all didn't want to release the video, I have the person who passed the video to release the video. And then we can solve all of it, because it was just a bunch of bull. Y'all know it. Y'all did all that, you, you good at that, you good at that. You like to paint these facade. That's not true.
Time is up, Ryan Sinewski, followed by Glynnis James Watson.
Good evening, everybody, I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission last week. As some of you might know, I was dismissed from this commission because Mayor Clark grew upset that I started asking questions for the benefit of a trans... As some of you might know, I was dismissed from this commission because Mayor Clark grew upset that I started asking questions for the benefit of transparency. Transparency and honesty in government seem to be the enemies of Mayor Clark and the four aldermen that are here. You'll notice if you own ones here. Who continually vote to pay bills that they say they know nothing about. If you attended last finance committee meeting, you'll know that. They knew nothing about any of the bills, what they were going to pay for. Um, for 1710 South Halsted, that's the big Metro property, um, now that's unhoused. Why is the city allowing such a huge property right off I-80 to be rezoned and allowed to not pay any property taxes? We need property taxes. We need that tax revenue so it doesn't come from the residents. Are you crazy? Tell Metro, no, we're not gonna rezonate for them just so they can have a hu- huge piece of prime land, um, that pays no taxes. Surely that's in your ward. You are a veteran alderwoman. You should be speaking out about these things. Who in the city of Harvey even allowed the transfer of this land to a nonprofit entity in 2020? This is crazy. We need the tax revenue. After kowtowing the three Metro executives so they could have their tax-free warehouse on I-80, I then watched the commission interrogate a tighter business and a daycare operator who want to open up in Harvey. These businesses both would pay taxes, lowering the tax bills for residents. Okay? Our taxes was really high. Why is the city treating them so morally? Do you want to, to chase businesses away from Harvey, Mayor Clark, and the four aldermen that are here? Do you want everyone to pay more taxes? Your actions say yes, you do. I don't care what your words say. We were told the comprehensive plan for Harvey was 90% complete. How in the world is that possible? Who's completing the planning document for the whole city without consistent and responsive involvement of residents and businesses? Preserving and restoring irreplaceable historic Harvey buildings, streets, and structures should be in this comprehensive plan, but of course, you know, we were, we had one meeting on it maybe? We weren't really asked. Stop getting rich from no bid demolition contracts like TK Construction, same owner as Alex's butcher shop, also campaign contributor to Mayor Clark. Stop getting rich from these development deals. This is our city and its history and character. We want to keep it that way. Uh, regarding the incident with Alderman Chapman, um, we know what happened. She filed a police report regarding the assault from, um, Ms. Davis. And then the retaliation was Mayor Clark ordered, uh, her arrest, charged her with assaults. Uh, I mean, how was that for, for gaslighting, right? It was perfectly timed to try to stop the public from knowing about police and how we have underreported crime statistics here and how we have a lot of officers that shouldn't even have guns in Harvey. Um, that committee meeting was supposed to be the very night Kobe was arrested. Isn't that interesting? How that happened? Uh, this is nothing new, but we're not gonna be silenced. This is not your money to spend and it's not your government. This is our city. You're accountable to us. And we're gonna keep speaking out.
Next is Glennis James Watson, followed by Sharon Mee. This place is James Watson.
Philis went home. All that commotion, I guess she went on home trips over. My name is Sharon Mee. I live on 151st and Winchester. My family has owned my home since 1967. Since 1967, I have paid property taxes consistently. My taxes are, are not behind. I am not receiving at no services for the money that, that I'm putting out. My granddaughter cannot ride her bike up and down the street grass grows. I live next to the guy who don't cut his yard for four times, uh, uh, a year, next to the abandoned.
Next?
Next to, o- over on this side is a squatter that lets her dog out. Her people out. Sir, you should be concerned about this. This matters to me. Y'all up there just to talk. This, this matters to me. I live here. Y'all just spending my money. Twenty-one hundred additional tax dollars, y'all. That was a lot of money from this one woman with this one pageant with this one pin number and, 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 and you just disregarded me. I don't like that. You ain't no better than the last dude that stayed here for 16 years and pleased us. We let the fox back in in the hen house, but I'm gonna grab some candy because y'all can't keep this up. I, I can't keep all taking up twenty-one hundred dollar tax bill while y'all yay, 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 yay to every seven that you see. You a lawyer, sir. How did you let them get us to down this shack on 154th and 15th? What is that? I wouldn't dare that my six-year-old over there do nothing. There ain't nothing but despair over there where you thought to send a community ceiling for my baby. Y'all nuts? Not sending my baby over there. Y'all tricked me. Y'all have to make it make sense from, from this point forward. I'm gonna tell y'all. Twenty-one hundred dollars was a lot of money and, and y'all will hear my voice. Y'all will know my name. My name is Sharon Mee. I live on 151st and Winchester. And I want some sidewalks over there so my baby can go down the street right and tearing up this street right now. So that's the whole story. Did you forget? You got that for that building over there. You got Tony Gatt over there. I'm, I'm, I'm sick of this mess. You want to make it make sense to me, sir. I, I ain't no dummy. I took off work two times to come here and you got me going in and out of this, this, this door tagging me for three minutes while you just voted to, to spend a hundred thousand dollars on my dog. While I was outside. Because you can't keep up with it. You to tell this elderly woman that she can't clap, sir, they clap at church. Are you to tell people back in Jesus? I want to ask you right there. You just told this, this elderly woman right here that she cannot clap. Who you think you are? I, you, you, sir, make it make sense to me from this point forward. I'm gonna be here. Everything, you know what? I'm gonna manage this, this might go. Because I'm gonna balance some change, baby, man. And if you think shit together, then sir.
Give it.
Then give it.
Next on the agenda is Jennifer Johnson, followed by Sarah Urban.
I just want to play this video since I was a servant. If you are looking at this video, I don't want to use too much of my time. If you're looking at this video, you will see Alderman Smith actually standing up in this area. Saying, "I got you." "I got you. I got you," you know what I mean? And since then, I've actually employed some security for my church. I also put some cameras up. You say, "You don't feel safe?" I don't feel safe. I don't know what the word "I got you" means, but it definitely comes off as a threat. Especially when you're pointing and serving, "Oh, I got you. Oh, I got you." That, that's definitely street talk. And it's definitely a threat. So of course, I had to employ security for my church and also watch while I see, uh, the department, uh, the department people coming through and parking on the side of the street on the side of my church, all type of little fools. Look, this is sound out. It's sound out for the foolishness. It's sound out for us continuously, uh, doing this. I'm not representing my church. I'm representing me. And I, I really want to be perfectly honest with you. I am really, really flawed at some of the character that is being displayed by these older persons. Juiski, we had a decent conversation today, but the conversation which we had was the fact that you have another place to residence. You have a M- M- S.A. What about the people that can't escape? That have to live in this central city that, that is dilapidated and full of crime and full of people that's doing these different things. While we're still having people on tax roll like Tyron, I'm not sure we paid her three hundred and some thousand dollars and I'm still on it. Uh, that you should be paying for the Vikings club. It, it's, it's a disgrace that we're continuously doing the same thing over and over again, approving bills without seeing receipts. Approving bills without seeing the bill. His American Express card is no longer on the road no more. He took it off. I wanted to buy. The federal Bureau of Investigation will find out. I don't want to attach myself to anything like that. I'm sure if y'all got some sense, you'll find yourself removing yourself from it too. I know love lost Elaine, but I cannot believe that you will allow yourself to some foolishness like this. Educated woman, I do not expect this from you. Never. Is that a gesture? I don't know whether it is. Oh, you got the crown. Are you responding to the public? Oh, is she an order man? Cause I think she's out of order. See, this is what I mean. It's one side, it's biased, and it's not right. So we're in the middle of talking about telling the public, chill out, be cool. Make sure you tell the mayor, be cool before you come out into it. Have a good night.
Next on the agenda is Sarah Urban, followed by Ruiyana. This is Urban's call. Next up is Ruiyana.
What I have to say will not and ever, when it concerns Harvey, be done in three minutes. I know I'm using up time now, but I am completely appalled at what has occurred tonight and at least two or three other city council meetings. My last meeting here on August, I think it was the 24th, the 24th and 14th. I said something to the audience here. And I think it was misconcepted that I was actually trying to say something against the entire administration. That was taken in error. It was not, it was not directed against the mayor per se. It was directed to two people, maybe three. And that was the finance committee. I will continue to process and push forward to see that we get some information from the finance committee and also from any of the entities that are involved in that finance committee. We are not stupid and we are moving forward. We are moving forward. You have to look at the positive things, instead of always looking at the negative things that are here. I have been here 55 years, living in the same house and attending my taxes. And more or less must be from other people too. Because there are so many people that we don't know that live right next door to us that have never, ever paid any taxes. That is unfair. Now, this has got to stop. We have got to get together. And you know what? I don't even have this on paper. Because this is from my heart. We are supposed to be more harmonious. We should be working together and not falling apart. We have made a lot of progress and I'm going to just read a little part. Harvey is in complete, is in complete stage of positive revolutionization. And current concerned citizens of which I am a member are currently and continuously, uh, will have seconds of this progression forward. We have seen improvements that surgery are pleased. So I want to say that again. The progression that we have, we are definitely pleased with it. Okay? I will continue the next conversation.
Next on the agenda is Jennifer.
There's a lot that could be said, but I'm not gonna say all those things that could be said because a lot that happened to say. But I'm not going to address those things first of all because I think that some of those things are my duty, designation. This administration is grateful. That's all I can say. I understand there's some people who aren't as pleased about how city council is operating. And I understand some people aren't as pleased about how the city is conducted. And you will have your chance and opportunity to do those things and address that in due time. And honestly, I encourage you to some. But wow. I'm gonna direct it the best way that I possibly can. What amazes me is that you gotta figure out who I am. Either I'm gonna be the thug, or I'm gonna be the burglar, but I can't be both. Either I'm gonna know what I'm doing or I'm not gonna know what I'm doing. I can't be both. You say I'm a churning sometimes, so you want to use that to attack me, but then you don't allow that degree to God and the city and, and use it to the best of my ability to help formulate what we're doing here. So I remove myself from the lineup. And I look at the other people. I look at our streets of sanitation, our police department, our fire department, our finance department. You know, no matter how much, few times I say that we have 164 million dollars in there, it seems like some people still just don't want to get the, get the memo of what that means. Maybe their minds can't conceptualize what 164 million dollars is. But the bottom line is, we have had uphill battle decline. In my profession, I have tried to keep God in front. And I'm telling you, sometimes it is extremely difficult. But I'm gonna keep meaningful handling. Because he has sent a lot of people around to do a lot of the work that we need to do in this city. And so I'm going to say to Alderman, to Alderman Smith, Alderman Duncan Brandon Vero, Alderman Tyler Rogers, Alderman Michelle, thank you very much. Thank you very much for embracing the vision of this city. Thank you very much for supporting the people on your wards and listening to what they have to say. Thank you for continually having that conversation and doing everything you possibly can to move this city forward. It's amazing how I hear people say that the city not doing anything. Or we got a building right next door that's being built. That building costs 19 million dollars. It's not the city of Harley building it. It's a private investment that's doing it. First, it accused me of stealing the money because it wasn't built right away within that timeline. Then, once it starts to get built, or before then, they say it's not gonna get built. Then, as it starts to get built, then they just want to brush their forehead and they foo foo on everything we do. And once it finally gets built, and it has, I think, a waiting list of 300 people. So wow, nobody wants to live there. Nobody wants to be there. There's currently a waiting list of 300 people. I don't know how to let this sound off. It, it just, you know, I mean, it's just confusing. If y'all confuse, I'm confused. Okay? Because it just doesn't make any sense. Now, we got 154th Street. And obviously, when we decided to repair it, I thought that was a good thing. Wow, this has to be repaired for over 100 years. They put down a little asphalt on top of it, made it look a little perfect. But the bottom line wasn't fully repaired for over 100 years. That's why you found brick on the street. That's why you found railroad tracks or transit tracks on the street. Because the people who were before this administration did not do it the right way. They just covered it up. I say it's like the titty child would make their bed and they decide to put the sheet on top of their clothes. That's not making bed. It's just covering up and trying to make it look good. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to do it the right way here in this city. We're trying. And all of that trying does not belong to me. It belongs to these people here. It belongs to those people there. If you're looking for heroes and if you're looking for people who actually do the work to make this city move forward, those are people. Those do not disparage me. I'm a lawyer. I'm gonna be a lawyer. I'm gonna continue to be a lawyer. I'm not gonna do anything to violate my own documents or to risk my license. But the bottom line is, yes, you will see. But the bottom line is, those are the people that run this city. And there's other people who are not here that run this city. And when you're talking about me, you're talking about the work that they're doing. That's who's doing it. So if nobody wants to say thank you to me, okay, thank you. Okay. Would you please? Would you please come forward? I didn't interrupt anybody by himself. I didn't interrupt anybody while I was talking. And I wasn't talking while anybody was talking. I wasn't talking while anybody was talking. Would you please come to order? Thank you very much. So once again, like I said, I want to thank you. Somebody saying, "I got him in." You damn right. And I'm going to keep being there. Put that one, put it right, that's why I'm rocking that, because put it right in there. We going to keep doing this over and over and over again until we get it right. But then, we can find this all the time. Do it till you get it, till you get it right. We going to keep doing this till we get it right. But in the meantime, in the meantime, in between time, respect to you. In the meantime, between time, we are redoing Hundred and Fifty Fourth Street. We are building new housing, fifty-one units, okay? On Hundred and Fifty Fourth problem. We are doing the engineering for Broadway Street. We have completed the engineering on Broadway Hundred and Fifty Seventh, is that correct? Or somewhere close to that? This highway has been paved and with the possibility of reconstructing that whole thing. We have guarded new businesses and we are continuing to bring in more. We will continue to do our decision. We, this group here, committed to not raising the taxes on part of the city when we saw what the tax bills were like. That's what we did. School district didn't do it. Library didn't do it. Even though they were going to blame the city for all the money. Cook County didn't do it. Mosquito Bay didn't do it. This group did. Because this group hurt the people. So, you know what? Y'all, 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 y'all go ahead and take this one. For those people who got problems, forgive y'all. I didn't worry about you. Okay? At the end of the day, I am the mayor for the hard-working, tax-paying, family-raising, job-having, decent, active people in the city of Raleigh. That's what I'm there for. And that's what I'm going to be. And if anybody got a problem in there, you can meet me in two thousand twenty-seven. But until that particular point in time, I'm still the mayor. I'm going to run this city the best way I possibly can. I'm going to listen to my people. If you have any concerns, you can always make an appointment. If you have concerns and you are a hard resident, you can come between twelve and three P.M. on Fridays to me. You realize that's really good things happening there. But I'm not going to get distracted and I'm not going to get dissuaded by these evil, corrupt, genocidal people who's trying to keep our city down. I'm going to keep fighting. Boy, did you hear that part? You heard it, did you? All right. So thank you very much, everybody. And Tabby Lee, and the next time on your agenda is a motion to adjourn. I ain't no liar. All the things that City Council made out of motion, like the first, the second, the fifth, all seven of them. Both of Paul's here and they thought we'd stand in charge at eight thirty-five P.M. Be blessed with y'all, baby.
Well, that was, that was a joke. That was like, wow. They're not doing.
The lady who said that tells about the thyroid, right?
Right.
Every practice, as soon as we step out of our tracks, the thyroid come home, you know? So every practice we go outside, we twist our ankles when we get in her, trying to do our part, participate in school. Who is the one bringing our necks on the sidewalk?
Right. No, no, I hear you. Well, honestly, I can say whatever I've asked, they never have an answer. Clark never has an answer for it. They never have an answer.
Chief, you didn't do it, no.
Everybody else, any of the residents would have to do that, to come out first and then they have the police go out.
So the police and elected officials, you can please take a seat until our residents have the chamber of the building.
Okay. Till next time. Till next time, thank you. Oh, the craziness. I think that's interesting. Oh, got some flashing lights out here. Good night. What is? What is this? This, why do they have to have all these flashing lights here?
Because they stupid.
What, are we gangs? Are we gangsters?
Like I said, that's, no.
Are we gangsters?
I'm a stroke survivor. Stuff like this trigger seizures and stroke. You shouldn't do this.
Right, right.
You sitting up here doing this like it's fun.
Look at all the police.
All I know is.
Who's on the Harvey streets right now?
I'm suing him. He the one ordered it, I'm suing him. I'm not suing the city, I'm suing him.
And who's, who's out in the street right now? Look at all the police.
That's what I'm saying.
Who's covering our streets?
They doing stupid stuff.
They're trying to intimidate the residents instead of watching the streets.
They act like somebody supposed to be trembling and scared or whatever.
Right.
They need to go on somewhere. He act like he done told somebody off because he.
Look at that.
And then, I'm looking, look at me, look at me, look at me. Nobody look at your boogabear look itself. Nobody want to even look at you. You think because you got some new teeth that everybody want to look at you? You man need to go head on somewhere, for real.
Right, right. And he's saying all these projects like, like he's God's gift to Harvey.
Yeah, like, yeah.
You never asked the people.
And I'm going to do this. Yeah, and while you digging up the bricks and the tracks, hope that the streets don't fall in. Stupid dummy.
And he never asked the people, what do we want you to do?
And you act like they my, they my engineers. Corinne only was a, 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 a Toys R Us manager and she talking about a, a engineer.
Right.
Man, engineer on to the gas station.
Right.
They need to go head on.
You are so right. Oh, man.
And so lady acting like she so scared. She ain't scared. She, she tough in front of them police though.
Right. I was going to say.
All of them here, all of them tough in front of the police.
Right. So what, what do you think was the worst thing that happened tonight?
All of it.
All of it?
All of it. Because there was some bull drive. All of it.
Can you believe that Clark had, um, had, had two fifteen-minute, um, what would you call it?
Actually, that were actually thirty-minute recesses because they, he didn't come back in fifteen minutes.
Right.
He, he is a little punk. That's it.
Right. Craziness. That's crazy.
All some, all some old goofy stuff.
And there, there's, that's the building he was talking about, their, their building? Which is, okay, it's a great new building, but again, Clark never asked the residents if that's what they wanted.
How you going to bring a building, a fifty-one unit building, you ain't got no grocery store? You ain't got no pharmacy? So you bringing people into a food desert? Man gone somewhere. And then you ain't got no adequate police? You got crime? You got drugs? You got hoes walking up and down Hundred and Fifty Fourth, even go the street toe up?
Right, right.
You got all these heroin addicts out here and then you want to talk about what you did and what you doing?
Right.
Man go head on. He needs to go and quit playing with himself.
And I don't care if he picks up Hundred and Fifty Fourth, but then what, they should fix whatever they're going to fix and put the historic brick back. Where's it going?
Exactly.
He's selling it for a lot of money right now. That's where it's going. Because he doesn't say anything. He's not telling us where it's going.
No, he ain't going, he ain't going to tell us.
Just like there's, there's the empty lots where the buildings, or we brought an investor. They were going to fix those buildings. Look, now it's just empty lot with rocks.
Is everybody out of the building?
I think mostly.
I think.
You can tell Clark's car is there because it's still running, sitting there running, like always.
It's been running for the whole meet.
Right, right. So wasteful.
It's been running for the whole meet.
Wasting our gas. Oh, all right. This right here, this is the mayor's SUV. It even has a special vanity mayor plate that we, that we pay for. Whenever the mayor's at City Hall, most times that I've ever been here, that has been here, it sits with the, um, the SUV sits with its lights on and with the, with the engine running. Wasting gas money for no reason. I don't know if he's running from the mafia or from gangs or what, but it's like he's always ready to go and he always has his police entourage.